Good morning, everyone. Today is October 23rd, 2018. This is the regular meeting, the Taos County Board of Commissioners. We welcome everyone here on this brisk fall morning. Hopefully, we'll get some nice moisture by the end of the day. I hear my call this meeting to order. Kirk Colwell.
Chairman Thunbro.
President.
Aishar Gagels.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
President.
Mr. O'Donnell.
President.
Everyone would please stand. I'd like to introduce our county treasurer and the super tributor, who will be giving our inspirational devotion to start our meeting up. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. I'm again very honored to take this stand and just open up our this meeting and open it up to the Lord God online, who is sovereign over all things. And as I was thinking about what I would like to pray, or what should we pray over our government, over our lives, over the servanthood of our positions, I thought of two people. I thought of King Solomon and I thought of Sister Teresa. I think we all know them well. So I looked up to distinct prayers that Solomon prayed. And one of them was initially when he started his position as the king of Israel. And then the second one was when he completed the building of the temple, which was his task to do. And so in his dedication, he would find, if you would like to read later on, "First King is 8:20 to 2:30." But it says, "But will God indeed dwell on the earth? Even heaven, and the highest heaven, cannot contain you, much less this house that I have built." It was, how could you put God in a building? He was greater than that. Yet, he says that he dwells through the power of the Holy Spirit in the temple, which is us. We are the temple of the Holy Spirit. And he wants to be contained in our lives. It says, "When an ocean lion or aircraft carrier is dedicated, a dignified official smashes a bottle of champagne against the side of the ship." When King Solomon dedicated the temple in Jerusalem in all its glorious splendor, he stood before the altar of the Lord and prayed a very long prayer. It was a prayer of such detail and texture that it offered a good match for the stunning architecture and ornamentation of the temple itself. Solomon's dedication prayer was an exhaustive recounting of the faithfulness of God in the past and an urgent request for God to continue such gracious faithfulness in the future. Picture the king, arms spread out before the Lord, standing up before the altar in front of the temple. The prayer goes on and on. His arms grow weary, but still the prayer continues. When we stand before the Lord and we call all the mercies of God in our lives, our prayers should be just as long and detailed. Our lives, our families, our congregations can all be the temples we dedicate to God out of thanks and gratitude. And today we stand in awe of what he has been to Taos County through all the many, many years that Taos County has stood. Oh, Lord, there is no God like you in heaven above or on earth beneath you, keeping covenant and steadfast love for your servants. And that is what we covet and we pray, that God would continue his covenant and his steadfast love over Taos County. I would also like to, I have had this in my, I have it in a plaque at home, but I brought it to work with me and it's part of my, you know, which you put on your desk. And it's my Sister Teresa. And again, you know, what we carry on as the presence of God dwells in our lives and as we serve Taos County or serve anywhere else in the world, it brings to life who we are in him. I will be attending next week a conference in Spokane, Washington. I'm a member of an international organization of Christian leaders. And a globe international is in 170 nations. And there are 210 nations in the world. So I always take Taos County with me because that's where I am. And I, because we pray for the leadership of the countries, but we also pray for the leadership of every government in our nation, in our state, in our counties, in our municipalities, and in our counties. But this is what Sister Teresa says. Do it anyway. People are often unreasonable, illogical, and self-centered. I think of it as a challenge, okay? Forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Be kind anyways. If you are successful, you will win some false friends and true enemies. Succeed anyway. If you are honest and frank, people may cheat you. Be honest anyway. What you spent years building, someone could destroy overnight. Build anyway. If you find serenity and happiness, they may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today, people will often forget tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may never be enough. Give the world the best you've got anyway. You see, in the final analysis, it is between you and God. It was never between you and them anyway. May God bless you and keep you and your families. Amen.
Thank you, Susan. Sheriff Holgird, would you please lead this committee?
I pledge allegiance to Susan Ryan, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like approval of the agenda.
I'm looking for approval of the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Kirk Colwell.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Aishar Gagels?
Yes.
Chairman Thunbro?
Yes. Next item under item six, citizens concerned. We ask that citizens that are here that wish to address the commission, come forward, state your name, and please keep your comments to less than five minutes in accordance with our actual resolution. So if there's anyone wishing, Bill, please, if you would please come forward. All right, Bill?
I'm doing fine, thank you, today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before this body. I want to use the time. My message is very simple. November 6th election, it's packed with important material. And I'm here to speak about your general obligation bonds. They're on the back of the ballot. And that can be a real challenge. They're not only on the back of the ballot, you have to turn it over to vote, but they're stated in legalese. It's not easy to understand. So I was just going to explain. I retired from UNMCA, but I'm part-time now doing some special projects. The college has a particular interest in bonds B and D. Bond A is, as I'm sure you very well know, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars, or a couple million dollars almost in Taos County senior citizen centers. Bond B is for library acquisitions. That's about $200,000, spread out around 17 public academic tribal libraries. Bond C is for yellow bus, school buses. And bond D is for higher education capital projects. And there's 4.3 million in there for UNM Taos, the final building in our Phase 1 buildout of the campus. I can't tell anyone how to vote, but I can explain what these bonds mean. The 4.3 million and the 200,000 for the library acquisitions alone is four and a half million dollars going into Taos County. That's major in itself. The 17 libraries in Taos County collaborate with one another. And they share information, they share data, the data streams that they're able to purchase with this funding. Whenever you come onto Flower Campus, take a look around because these bonds have funded, have helped fund every building out there. So I'm simply asking everyone to take a close look, turn the ballot over, and try to think about what this kind of funding could do. It's a statewide election. There's roughly 150 million, I think, well, more like 130 million this time. Every two years, this comes up for a vote. In 2016, Taos County was number one out of 33 counties in the state in their approval of the higher education bond. That was amazing, 77.4% of voters voted yes for higher education. And that's something to be proud of. The last thing I wanted to mention is that the way these bonds are structured, they don't increase property taxes. We've been paying those taxes for something like close to 30 years now. And they're calibrated so that the older bonds are retired at a rate so that the new bonds come onboard and it doesn't spare stamping taxes. So if there's any further questions, I can conclude my questions.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Ken Manning, I live in Taos. A few weeks ago, the Commissioners adopted a wide range of amendments to plan these regulations. I certainly appreciate y'all's attention to the concerns raised about Article 7 and Article 9. I believe you did the right thing in terms of not adopting the provisions that I think were problematic. At that meeting, the Commissioners expressed a frustration about the fact that there was a large level of citizen concern that arose pretty much at the last minute. And I think it was very fair for y'all to be frustrated in that regard. I don't think the proposed amendments got the attention at the planning commissioner level that they deserved. So y'all commented that you wanted to figure out how to try to avoid kind of the last-minute surge of concern going forward. So I've been thinking about that and have three specific thoughts about how you might think about going in that direction. Legal notice in the House news does not cover. It covers you legally, but that is not going to provide the citizenry with a heads-up about what's coming down the pipe. So let's not hide behind, hey, we publish it in the paper, we cover our legal base. First suggestion. I get an email notifying me of order of Commissioners' meetings. It's crap. It says what's going to be on the agenda. I don't get an email about planning commission meetings. Seems like that would be incredibly simple to not just notify people that are on the west of your meetings of planning commission meetings. See the agenda, say, oh, I need to now go down and look at the file. So I think to illustrate the level of concern that that problem raises is, at the planning commission meeting where they adopted the landings regs and forwarded to, from your approval, not a single member of the public was at that public hearing. Not one. So, yeah, is it broken? Absolutely. Can it be fixed fairly easily just by notifying people by email? This is not hard. Second. It would be incredibly helpful if background material for your meetings was available online. So the agenda's there, but if you want to delve into the details, you need to come down here and ask someone to pull the file on that and then you can wade through it. It's been standard procedure in town for many years that all background is available. You just click on another icon of that agenda item. Everything pops up. Most of the material these days is there electronically. You just have to somehow have one of your staff people attach the background to that agenda item. Again, not hard. It keeps the citizens informed. Third item. When you have an issue of nature for landings regs for discussion, just put that on the planning commission agenda for public hearing, have that on your agenda for public hearing. I don't think it does justice. Now, this would not be the norm, but in major issues, I think you need to consider appointing a task force. Maybe each of you appoints a member of the task force, or however you want to do that. But that way, you develop consensus. I've been part of that process several occasions. And that way, it's not a totally staff-initiated thing that people are responding to. People weren't taught. So I think there's ways to improve that process. And I felt like I had some responsibility since I was part of stirring up some problem to try to give you some constructive thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? Okay, your man's seen, then we'll proceed. Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, next item under seven, under the minutes, I'm seeking approval for the October 9th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. How second, Mr. Chairman? I have a motion and a second to approve the October 9th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Kirk Colwell.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Aishar Gagels?
Yes.
Chairman Thunbro?
Yes.
On the right-hand side presentation, we will have a presentation regarding the Sipabu Ski Area proposed expansion. This will be presented by John Paul Bradley, the Sipabu Mountain Manager. And I believe it will be on the screens for everyone to see. Commissioners, you'll have a couple handouts that have been provided for us. Good morning.
Morning, thank you Commissioners. Thank you for putting it on the agenda. I'm just making sure I know what text I left here. All right, for maps. Great. Commissioners, thank you very much for letting me present the Sipabu Master Development Plan. Members of the community, whether you know it or not, thank you for joining me today. One thing the Forest Service has asked me to do is to try to document and capture folks that are fortunate enough or unfortunate enough to hear about my presentation. And if I could please ask the Commissioners just to start my presentation log, I'd appreciate it. Anybody knows, I would appreciate your signatures as well. And I have additional maps, if anybody would like maps afterwards. I have file lists I can bring up. So, yeah, my name is John Paul Bradley. I'm a mountain manager over at Sipabu Ski Area. I've been there since 2001. And just wanted to bring the Commission up to speed on our master development plan. The fact that we have a plan, we've had a plan since 1990. We produced a new plan in 2010. Got it accepted by the Forest Service in 2012. And we're looking to make some amendments to that plan as we've worked through that plan in the last six years. And found some things that we'd like to adjust to continue to make a good product for folks. And just kind of go over is who we are, the purpose and need for the master plan, why we want to make these amendments, our goals of who we are, this is what we're doing. Two maps there, that'll be the summer/winter maps so you can kind of see, I'll try to go through and explain the amendments that the plan that we're working through in the Forest Service. And then kind of what's next, kind of the timeframe on how we want to move ahead. So for those of you who've been around for a while, so you can, it's the smallest ski area here in northern New Mexico, pretty much smallest in the entire Rocky Mountain region. We're the oldest ski area in the northern part of New Mexico. We started in 1952. We're also one of the fastest-paced ski areas in the Rockies. When I started at Sipabu Ski Area back in 2001, we did just over 14,000 skiers. And with strong marketing, trying to work on developing the resort and pushing with through the vision of the whole winter family who founded the resort. Back in the '14-'15 season, a solid winter snowfall, we broke 51,000 skiers. 51,000 and four. I'd like to mention this forest skier with my four and a half-year-old daughter in a backpack. That should be one of that mark. But yeah, so it's a 72% growth since 2001. And I mean, that's kind of who we are, but we really believe that the way we got there is maintaining the charm of Sipabu. For those of you who've been there, it's a quaint little mountain. And that is a goal of ours, is to maintain that charm so that people continue to comment for what they love and kind of what they expect of the place. And so, looking at this plan, we're trying to figure out how we can do that. Some of the reasons that we believe that we've been able to have a growth rate of 72% and trying to understand how we got to where we are within just a 215-acre permanent area. And our marketing team loves to say we have the best skills in the Rockies. We have a $47 adult lift ticket comparable to other areas in the county who are much more affordable. I hear it all the time. I joke a couple of years ago that the best thing that ever happened to Sipabu was that Taos razor prices $102. I didn't have to do anything. People started coming over there because I was a different price point. But it made me realize that I need to be a different price point. I'm offering a different product. And then they went to $105 last year. I was like, you gotta be kidding me. This is great. You know, it's a bad year. We had a record season. And they shipped $110. And so, you know, I believe that they're providing another option, but I think we also are providing another option for skiers. And not just skiers, but local skiers in particular. We do other things. We have three free lessons for never skiers. We really strongly believe that we need to build that core. And we've seen it. We're a feeder result, we know that. We teach people to skate, and they move on. That's fine. At least they become passionate about what we are, passionate about enjoying the sport as well. We do a lot of logging packages and whatnot to try to get people there, trying to make it affordable. We also have very affordable rentals and equipment. And those are all things that we believe helped us get to having these great winters that we've been having. We also strongly believe that we have a good product that we're producing. And we have great staff. We hear all the time how much folks from West Texas, they're just show-energizing. You guys have got the front lines of people working for you. And that's, I mean, that's a huge part. I can't say enough about the staff. The one big thing at Sipabu, on the screen, is they, if you haven't been there, we build a giant castle out of snow over President's Weekend. And the kids show up in costumes, and they just play on it. We spend about a week building it. They spend about two hours just going there. But it's great. It's a good community thing we've been doing for years and years. And it gets a tremendous amount of traffic up there at the mountain. A lot of locals have been coming for years to that event. Other things we've done and continue to do is a carboard derby where we get lots of the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, the school programs, they build these vessels and show up and slide down the hill. And that's been a fun thing. We do pond skating contests. I think it was 110 feet long, it's all pond. We have really good, anybody here who has kids or grandkids that are under 10 years of age or fifth graders, we give free season passes to them. No strings attached. We want them to just skate. There's NSA study, National Skiers Association study that talks about when do kids become passionate about a sport or an activity. And it's kind of in the fourth and fifth grade range. And so we've decided to give them a free season pass. No strings attached. They just come up, you know, give the parents, explain they're in fifth grade, show us a report card, something like that. And we'll take the photo and turn on the season pass. We just want them to learn to skate. I also have some ulterior motives. I'm always looking for future employees. So even if I can capture them for just a few years before they go off to college, that would be great. We have a scholarship program there at Sipabu that we offer to employees and their kids. And we had that program going for about five or six years now. And we're just over $50,000 that we give them back to employees and their kids or grandkids in the form of scholarship. And we really try to find a way to give everybody who applies something, but we're also very focused on kids that are planning on returning back to the community with their degrees. Timber cells has been a big thing for us. And you guys or anybody is from the Penasco area, you know that the community of Real has had some hard time producing areas for timber cells in the last couple of years. But we've been a great solution for that. We've done a couple of projects. We built a new lift three years ago. We built a trail two years ago. And we generated about 7 acres of timber. And timber's a byproduct for us. But around here, based on wood files, it's a free source. And so it's been great. We just were like, we've got a whole different community that come up and get wood. And it was huge help for us. And it really benefited the community. I have people all the time, hey, you got a project this year? You have wood. And so it's been a good driving factor for us to try to continue to do projects because we know that it's a good resource for the community. One thing we actually had to do is kind of control that project. We had folks that would just want to kind of shove and pour all the wood. They just wanted it all. To me, it's just a byproduct. I want to get rid of it. And I'm grateful for them showing up. But we started charging $10 in chocolate. We cut the trees, we bring them down to the parking lot. They're just in a pile, they just cut it up. You know, 15 saws run in one. And when I go back down off the hill, the wood's gone. Bring another load down. And it works great. But the money really is just, was a method of trying to control the consumption and spread it out. And so what we've now done is started giving the money to the logging-related food basket there at Penasco, the food bank. Two years ago, when we did the five acre project, we gave $100 to the food bank. So it's been a win-win. So the money just goes back to the community. So, uh-oh, we rolled back this. So purpose and need. Why do we want to do this, Mr. Mayor? Why do we want to make amendments? So Sipabu Ski Area, we have a comfortable carrying capacity of 1,180 skiers. That number comes from a calculation that's kind of an industry standard. We look at what our parking lot capacity is, what our traffic is, what our seating in the restaurant is, what our uphill slope, uphill capacity of our lifts, what the capacity of our ski trails is based on difficulty levels. And you formulate it all together and you come up with what your carrying capacity is. And so we're 1,180. And this last winter, we had our second D.C. state ever on. And this last winter, we had our second busy state ever on Fed Fest Weekend, February 17th. We had 1,160 skiers. Second busy state ever. A couple of years back, we did 1,167. It wasn't on Fed Fest, so we actually probably had more people on the property that day just playing castle and just around with their kids. But actual tickets that day was 1,160. And again, it hit home. Like, hey, this is, I mean, not a great year. We had 67 or 68 and a half inches of snow reported up there at the ski area. In fact, I mean, it's gonna be a good year, right?
Yes.
We've already had 10% of our annual snowfall from last year. We already had seven inches. So, you know, it's bound to be better. It's gotta be. And so, the other thing that happened was it was our third best winner on record. And with the worst snowfall in 42 years, talking with the Hall of Ball, I remember one of the founders, she's 91 years old. She reminded her of the winner of '78. And so, we're thinking, how do you have your third best winner on record? How do you beat the year before by a little over 400 skiers, about 2/10 of a percent? How do you buck the trend where the state as a whole was down 32% of skier count? Now, Red River, I'll give them credit, they're about 4,000 skiers last year, but the state as a whole, we were down 32%. And we are up 2/10 of a percent. So it's, how do we do that? You know, what happened? Again, thank you cows. You know, $110. You know, they can come over and they can buy two lift tickets and get a couple really good cheeseburgers with some good green chili and a sandwich. You know, and we love folks showing up with skiing in cars, you know, with their squash bags in their pants before they hit the slopes. And I think that we're filling an itch that is needed. But at the same time, I get a lot of folks who've been skiing at Seabuckoo forever who are coming up to me like, oh, it's a little tighter out there. You know, it's not the same as it was back in, you know, the 90s or even 2000. And I showed them, I just keep powder for days afterwards, after a storm. Now it just gets eaten up. And folks are like, what happened? And I'm like, well, you know, we can tell everyone the secret. And then they went and told more people. And so, we have a lot of folks over there now. And it's great. It's great. We're able to reinvest in the resort. We built a new fixed gear quad two years ago. We built a new van. We bring along our lodge. And so, some good things are going to come from it. But at the same time, I'm being asked, how are you going to maintain the charm? How are you going to do this? And so, we took our plan and we kind of threw it out there to the best planning, ski area planners in the world. The SE group, the Soengineering Group out of Frisco, Colorado, up by Prehens. And they said, hey, you know, you got a nice plan. We want to make some nice pretty maps for you and we have some suggestions for you. And so, here's some of the things that we'd like to do. Oh, this has a little laser on it? Oh, it does. Well, it doesn't show. Anyway, let me see if I can explain some of the master plan here. Let me get you kind of the bearing straight. Lower left corner is a yellow and black dotted line. There are three bits in that area. That is Seabuckoo as it is right now. It's 215 skiers there. And that's the current Seabuckoo. This plan has existed in some shape or form since 1990, when Bruce Volander submitted it to the Forest Service. And then, working with the Forest Service, working with the SE group. And the technology has changed and with some lift technology. And so, we have some amendments on this plan that we want to go through with the Forest Service. And the first lift to the, start on the left for the, which would be the east side of the mountain, and you move to the right. The first lift there, it goes all the way to upper mountain. It's a dotted line. It's the Seabuckoo Express. We've made a slight alignment adjustment to that to, so we're not crossing over the new lift we built. From an operational standpoint, if a lift goes down, it makes no more sense to not have them crossing each other so you can quickly back to it. And then up top, we've added two small magic carpets, two little red lines up top and a beginner lift. Back when Bruce looked at this plan back in the 90s, he knew that there was this great beginner train up the top. We can see the contour lines are quite far apart. When in 2010, sorry, 2012, when we worked upon submitting and applying to Forest Service, we also identified that area. But we were really lacking in technology of how to get people up that mountain to learn to ski up there and then be able to get them back down without overdoing them. Like, it defeats the purpose, right? We get people there, we give them a break, we get a train, and now they're stuck at the top of the mountain. They can't get down. And so, lift technologies that have changed, we're looking at a lift now that would be, you know, what's her name, the lift? And what it would be is, it's a detachable lift, just like what House is putting in this year. But we would be throwing in a gondola car about every fifth or sixth chair. So, the cool name is, it's a chongdala. So, hey, bro, let's go ride the chongdala. I think it'd be a great name for New Mexico. Good stuff, right? Do you think they like it? But anyway, what I like about this thing is now I can take beginner lesson and I can get an instructor and I can put seven or eight kids in a gondola car with an instructor and I can run them up to the top of the mountain, you know, six, seven minutes. And then they have a great beginner trail or beginner train at the top. If you look at a mountain, you look at slope analysis map and looking at contour lines, it's all green up top, beginner area. Lower left, it's expert. If you spin the map upside down and look at it, it looks like we're in upside-downs here. The beginner trains at the top. So now we have the lift technology to get people up there to this zone. They can learn on those carpets. They can learn on the beginner lift up there. And if they're good enough, there's two beginners that bring it back down. If they're not good enough, we don't overtrain them and discourage them from coming back. We just run right back down the lift. And then send back those for understanding, learn some more. So, those are some of the amendments there. And the biggest change is this beginner pod up top. You know, even though this plan is now 28 years old and we have somebody new who can look at it and give us a nice pretty map, we still face north. Where we face north, we still face south. Where we face south, the small canyon mountain's still the same. So the trail network theory really didn't change. But some of the technology has. Another thing in this amendment that we'd like to do is increase the footprint of the current lodge that we have planned up top because we want to use the technology of that detachable lift so that we can make it very ADA compliant. And so, by joining the lift with the building, you could ride it up, get off of a, go into the car and literally just wheelchair into the restaurant. Grandparents could ride up there and sit there and watch their grandkids learn to ski up top to be able to ride back down. And so, we'd be looking at, instead of, right now, we have in our plan, a 1,500 square foot building. And we'd be looking at doing a 10,000 square foot footprint up there by joining the two, the top lift terminal and the building. The other update, other change would be is as we moved farther west in the American Canyon, that lift alignment has moved downhill about 250 vertical feet down into a meadow along the Rio Grande. And the SE group suggested that we lengthen that lift because then we get more vertical feet skied. I mean, the skiers, we want to get on as low as we can. We want to go as high as we can, get as much vertical. So we said, okay, yeah, we like that suggestion. So that's kind of the updates that we're working on, trying to amend and kind of a little bit of the background on why. The summer operations has an amendment as well and it's a fairly significant amendment. Because back in 2012, when we wrote this plan, there was no guidance from the US government in terms of what skiers could do on public lands. And since 2012, there's now the Summer Recreation Improvement Act that was enacted. And so, the Forest Service now has guidance on what they can allow on Forest Service lands. And if we go and put in, I would say, $7 million gondola, we want to see how we can make sure we can incorporate that into summer operations and also increase and have a technical impact over on the other side of the US Hill there. So we'd like to run the lift in summer. I've got a couple of green logs there at the very bottom of the existing area. That's our disc golf course.
The hardest disc golf course in the world to walk. Every hole's uphill.
Well, so there's...
I don't know how you get back to the parking lot there, except the last hole is just straight down the cliff.
You have a major hole, 18?
I know, it's straight down the hill.
You work on the hill?
Yeah, always end up on the river and you lose your foot.
And we got more discs, so we got more discs for sale.
It's a flop.
So the upper mountain, so disc golfers, maybe except for Jim, has all really asked for more disc golf.
I love it.
We have probably one of the top 10 disc golf courses in the country.
State tournament's here two years ago, three years ago?
State tournament is here just about every year. State singles championships, state doubles championships. We hosted the National Disc Golf Association Championships a couple of years ago. And they just keep asking for more. And they don't understand. It takes a while to get through the process. But one thing we proposed is there's a little green wall up top. We propose to do an additional disc golf course up top. It's really hard to pick out on the monitor here. But at the very top, there's a yellow circle up there, which would be a very beginner-friendly interpretive hiking trail. Our thought is to try to make it very ADA compliant. And we think it'd be a really neat experience. There's somebody on the wheelchair like, how often can you actually get out into the woods? Well, I want to make this a new adventure where you get on a lift, you ride up the top of the mountain and then have a loop up there. There's a beautiful ascent meadow up there. And then the thought is, is that, you know, people can ride up the lift and have lunch up there. And then there's also a hiking trail way out also further of the property, further that goes down the line, opposite the west and then back up to the top. So beginner and advanced hiking trail, just trying to provide other options for folks to get up. The big blue log would be areas that the SE group has identified that would be good terrain for mountain biking. Again, trying to use that lift technology to be able to incorporate some mountain biking. And then, there is a yellow zigzagging line on the left side of the map there. That would be a multi-stage zip line. Down at Ski Apache, they're doing a zip line tour right now. It's three stages and very, very popular. And again, the thought is to be using lift to get people up, multi-stage zip line coming down. Each one of those transitional turns, it would be an employee that we'd have staff for that activity. And we're looking at like about an hour and a half zip one tour down through the canopy. And then, we're also looking at, there's a kind of pink zigzagging line and a straight line just below it. And one of the things that's now been part of the act is Alpine Coaster. Maybe you've seen Alpine slides at things like up at Breckenridge where you sit, you're in almost like a luge and you slide down. But with those, if you get a drop or rain, you've got to shut them down. It's fifty, you ride out. You just, not good at all. A lot of road rash. But this device is actually a, it's kind of think of it as like a roller coaster in terms of structure. It's an elevated structure that's about two to three feet, can be up to 20 feet off the ground. And it has, it's a stainless steel track, two-go track, that your, the cart that you sit in is actually attached to the track. So there's no being washed out. And really, the neat thing about it is it can use summer and winter. And when you look at a slope aspect map, there's a zone in there that doesn't have great normal exposure. So we're like, well, how can we use this zone? And so, this would be, you get on, you ride down and you get to the bottom and then it's closed loop. It pulls you back up to the top. You can do it again. But one of the things we like about it is it provides an opportunity for folks who feel the ski, to have an activity that they can do as well in winter. So trying to diversify on that kind of thing. And then, using those two little magic carpets, going back to my four-and-a-half-year-old, she loves going over Red River, doing their artificial snow tubing hill. And so, trying to use those carpets up top to do a little tubing hill and trying to just incorporate what the act kind of gives the Forest Service guidance on. And so, and also trying to, you know, how can we, how can we keep more employees around year-round? Right now, we're so seasonal. How can we keep more people employed year-round? So, kind of the timeline on the project, right now, I'm just coming out. I'm just talking to people. Just wanting to get feedback. What do you think? Am I crazy? My ski problems are terrible? You know, a big part of it for us is that I want to make sure I maintain a solid price point so I don't move people who, you know, I don't, I'm not looking to have to increase my lift ticket price. I'm hoping to just be able to increase my skier count. This plan would increase my skier count to about 3,600 people per day with my new comfortable carrying capacity. But one of the things that I love about it is people are always saying, man, it's getting busy jungle. And when we look at our carrying capacities, my comfortable carrying capacity is 1,180 for the property. But when I break it down a little more and a little more specific, my slope capacity right now is about 1,800. And when people get up a mountain, I find it doesn't feel near as busy, the basic. And so, one of the things that we've done and really worked on is how do we make sure that we can keep that charm? How do we keep that feel? And so, even at 3,600 people per day or, you know, on a peak build-out day, our slope capacity has the capacity of just about 9,000 people. And so, is there a 1:1 ratio? Or like a 1:3? And so, people get up there, even on the busiest day, it's going to feel really quiet. What I want to do is when we have 300, 400 people and we have a mountain that has a capacity of like 9,000. The goal is to begin, you know, to be able to maintain that charm and Seabuckoo matters when people show up. It just feels like there's nobody here and, but now we've got the infrastructure to get people up there and enjoy that journey. And I won't mind skiing with some powder again because I usually don't get out there.
Get places from the space and we get more riders to have.
So yes, I mean, we've worked through some planning. We had a fire a couple of years ago. We lost eight units. We've worked through the process. We have money and escrow from the fire insurance and it'll be 34 new units. We didn't pull the trigger on this year, not a linear. And the kind of, as a company as a whole, they said no capex this year. So it's down. I'm not here talking to everybody. And, but yeah, absolutely. And then part of the thing is I want to, I want to get folks who are like, man, I can capitalize on this. Man, I'm going to take grandma's old house that's cool old adobe. I'm going to remodel it. So I can make it a VRVO. You know, and I want to, I want to get the word out so people can start planning on it. You know, I, I got a, our retail manager, he just bought $50,000 of his ski equipment for himself. He's got a mobile trailer. He's going to do a mobile rental shop. Because he sees that there's going to be the need. We currently, he's like, man, people get backed up in line. You know, and they want to get out on the hill. Our goal is to get people out on the hill. And he's like, I'm going to have a mobile rental shop where people can just come over to me in the parking lot, rent equipment for me. And we think it's a great idea because, again, he's feeling it yet. He's being an actual pro doer. And so, I'm excited that he's trying to do this. And, you know, I'm all ready. Or I talk to folks over there, they're like, I think I'll do a ski shop. Or I'm going to do a VRVO because everybody from West Texas drives to Moreau to get to Seabuckoo. And, you know, I hope that the gals at the Bistro there at Penasco say, you know, we're open doing pizzas on the weekends and we get a lot of traffic from you, but we only do it on weekends. We're going to look at doing it all week. You know, I want to, I hope that people look at this and say, man, how can we capitalize on this? So anyway, timeline on this. We're working through the process with Forest Service to amend our plan. Forest plans, or master plans get amended all the time. They're supposed to be a fluid document. That's what they are. An amendment to the plan, we hope to get it accepted sometime this winter. Doesn't mean we can do it today. It's just an acceptance. It just means we're in line with the forest plan. Once we have an acceptance, then what we would like to do is proceed to submit an FS 299 form, which then makes it more formal and would start the legal process. And the NIBA process on this kind of project would be, at the highest level, it'd be an EIS, you know, an impact statement, which is a two-year study. And, you know, and this is where I get, go and talk to the board and get feedback on just what we would like to do, not what we're doing, just what we'd like to do. But what I'm excited about with the EIS is it gives the environment its chance to voice its opinion, you know, the Mexican thought of the Gossaw, or the three-legged toad or something. It's gonna give the environment that opportunity as well. And it'll be a two-year study, with lots of public comments and feedback. But, and so if we submit that in, say, the spring of 2019, maybe we'll be able to get out there and do something come the spring of 2021. So we're still a ways out, but that's what we're doing, that's what we'd like to do, I should say. And kind of the process and soft process of how we've gotten to where we are. Thank you. Morning.
Commissioners, any questions, comments? Really appreciate everything.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Might even get some small therapy here.
I hope so. If nothing else, we'll just take the lunch here.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anybody who wants to add? Anybody who wants to sign on? I appreciate it.
Okay, commissioners, moving on. Next item, number nine, is our consent agenda, I'll read the consent agenda. And then we'll seek approval of items less than a year old, and they'll become the next business of the meeting following the vote on the consent agenda. Item A is a request of approval for change orders for the roof not a fire station. And B is the FDR resolution number 10, 2018-19 fiscal year resolution, adjusting 2019 fiscal year to establish a fund and budget to account for revenue expenditure generated from community centers around Taos County. And C is approval of budget adjustment for salt-based administration funds for 202-1630. And D is approval of budget adjustment for healthcare assistance fund 0220-1940. And E is approval of resolution number 2018-59, a resolution declaring eligibility and intent for Taos County to submit an application to the Mexico Department of Transportation for federal fiscal year 2018-19 transportation alternatives program, the TAC funds. And item F is a seeking approval for a resolution 2018-60, a resolution declaring that wholesale removal of children from their mother and parents in cases of misdemeanor cases is a violation of payment rights, cause of potential child trauma, physical harm, and supporting the efforts of state and federal officials to promote reunification of children with their families. Commissioners, does the consent agenda as read? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda presented for approval.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gallos?
Yes.
Chairman Thaddeus?
Yes.
Thank you all. Doing nice to see the week to have our place. All right, under department matters, next item under item 10. Item A is to request a, to schedule a public hearing for major development permit commercial use MAJ-01-2018 for final review and then possible approval. The proposal is to build the following commercial structures on 6.762 plus or minus acre property located at 36 Principal Highway 150, Subzone Number One of the Upper Los Glorias Neighborhood Association. Mr. Panaya?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning, commissioners, county manager, county attorney. Yeah, I'm here today to request a meeting date to, for the commission to review and approve, and while possibly approve, a major development permit application that was heard before the Taos County Planning Commission on October 10th. And per section 4.5.6 of section 99 of Taos County's managed regulations, the Board of County Commissioners has fortified calendar days after the closing of their written decision of the Planning Commission to hear to propose major development permit. The record of decision for this recommendation by the Planning Commission was filed by staff at the county clerk's office on October 15th, 2018. The deadline to hear the major development permit request is November 29th. Staff is recommending that a meeting, any meeting date between November 19th and November 29th, so that the advocate and staff can adequately prepare for this public hearing. So, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, staff respectfully requests that you schedule a hearing anytime between November 19th and November 29th to hear this application. And staff, any questions at this time?
Um, do you guys have any comments? Any trouble?
Oh, and, Mr. Chairman, if I may, also, staff, the commission took three hours to hear this, this request, so I would just ask that you calculate that time into your schedule when you propose it a day and time.
You want between the 19th and the 29th?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So we're only having one meeting next month, correct? Let's record it up. That was the goal, but sounds like this would be an independent meeting for the rest of the party, so that you can learn. This would be better timed, than the joint town meeting, than live meeting. Mr. President, is that? Between the 19th and the 29th?
It's Monday, the 19th, through Thursday, 29th. And of course, the week of the 19th is the week of Thanksgiving, so the county will be told that's a different day.
I think we'll do that next week, when we're all back in town. Any of that? Any of that would be fine, Mr. Chairman. So far. So we're shooting for our regular meeting, who, the 13th, that's right after holiday, that's not a good for, I believe, please?
Well, we're gonna propose the 9th, and then we're reading to see if anything else is necessary, since I think that's what we're following, maybe that last week.
So is it 20th or 27th?
20th or 27th, I'm fine. I'm going to 3rd.
Yes. And I'm actually gone 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th, but that's the only time I'm gone. So, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Either of those dates works.
Work, I'm fine. The town meeting, Mr. Chairman, is still scheduled for?
15th to 15th.
I also have, specifically afternoon, I have a morning and a town meeting as well. There's not enough.
Why don't we just do the 27th, and not wait after the holiday?
Okay.
So there's no...
Does that work, Mr. Panaya?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, that would get staff adequate time and the advocate adequate time to...
What time do you want to start?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'll leave that up to you. We prefer a morning meeting, but that's 9:00, which is your discretion.
Sure. What are we calling this? Set three hours to room 9 to 12. Did you get that, Lisa? For the... County? 9 to 12? Do we meet here, Ramon? Your choice? No? Okay, 27th, 9 to 12?
Okay. Sounds good, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so we're doing that in the form of a motion, I think.
Any motion? Schedule a meeting for November 27th.
Second.
Public hearing.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, to schedule a public hearing for major development permit commercial use MAJ-01-2018 for the 27th, November 9th to 12th. Clear call.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gallos?
Yes.
Chairman Thaddeus?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, commissioners. Can you reach out to Commissioner Panaya when he gets back, just to make sure there's a lot of contacts and we have plenty of time? Please, Chairman, we'll do that.
Next item, item 11, county managers report matters, this will be updated to the commission on various items affecting Taos County.
Good morning, commissioners. So as we were talking about different dates, I do have a request, as last Friday, county manager and our HR department did receive some quotes for the potential health insurance increases, so I was hoping that on November 7th, there would be a possibility for a work study with the board to address the department heads, all the elected officials, our union, all of us together to present the cost increases and potential options for the county regarding health insurance. If November 7th is open, I would propose a 1:30 afternoon meeting, by about two, three hours tops, and we could discuss health benefits and overall compensation plan. This was a major component, and I would have the idea of the cost increases, we can really move forward in compensation and the key at next year's election. Does the board have availability in the afternoon of November 7th?
I have a commitment at 3:30. Mr. Chairman, I have a commitment at 4:00.
Like I said, I propose a 1:30 start time, I think we can get through most of it within about two hours, so I would like everybody in the same room, potentially at the same time to talk about it, so that includes union, department heads, county officials, so if that works, I'll go ahead and schedule a November 7th work study at 1:30. Thank you.
Go a little bit earlier, 1:00?
1:00, 1:00, that's fine.
Maybe 1:00, because I have to be, um, by 3:00. I have to be somewhere after 3:00.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I said you are meeting that morning, so I may be a little late, it's in Los Angeles.
It has to be on the 7th.
What's that, November 7th?
It has to be on November 7th.
No, it doesn't have to be, well, we typically do a department head meeting the first Wednesday of every month, so I was trying to combine it with that department head meeting. The commission can't make that, we can always reschedule it. We do need to make a final decision, though, relatively early within the month of November, so that we can do open switch normal with things that may be affected by a change order decision.
I'll be going, I'll be myself, miss fully, talk for us.
If it's okay with the board, I can get Commissioner Gallos independent prior to that, or right after, so he can be given that same information.
Why don't you try to do it before, that way if he needed to call in for a specific guy, there was a problem with that, does that work? He'll meet with you individually, show you the plan, that way. Something you can relay to me, and I'll present it for you, or you can call in. Does that work, then?
Maybe the same for me, too, because I'm not sure I need that that much.
Yeah, you can just let me know if you have something after you meet with him, and I'll present it.
Okay.
Does that work?
Ultimately, the goal is just to present the information to everybody at once, for the most part, the union, our department heads, staff, so everyone's on the same page. Thank you. Just to follow up, our next meeting after today will be November 9th, it's a Friday, it'll be a regular meeting along with our canvassing of the election. And I just want to inform the board that that same afternoon at 1:00, the para board will be doing a road show here in our chambers, so if there's any questions, concerns, anything you would like to address the para board about, they will be in our chambers for information gathering.
Valerie, just a question for Valerie. The canvassing needs to be its own meeting, correct?
Yeah. It can be combined.
So it could be anytime during our regular meeting? Okay, and then what will make that one of the first things, like under presentation, where that presentation falls?
That's fine.
Does that work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, did you say the 9th?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that meeting, so?
Yes, sir, we do need to canvass the election, no later than November 9th.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I hope I'm here for the most, yeah, probably, because it's usually been our meetings before, you know?
Yes, and that would be the goal that day as well, because of the 1:00 commitment for para chambers.
I would not be at that meeting.
As the chairman had mentioned, we do have a tentative reschedule of the joint meeting with the towns for November 15th, so we'll continue to move forward with that. And we do apologize for canceling last week, it was a couple conflicts with both the town, and I think we wanted to be better prepared for the joint meeting, make the most out of the time for getting everyone together, so.
Good chance I would be here.
On November 15th, the town meeting?
And I believe we're shooting for the afternoon on that, though, double check and get some information out.
On that, I wonder if we can schedule it later in the evening, because I'm in Los Angeles.
Okay, I just want to remind the board of an invitation on this Friday, October 26th, for ribbon cutting in Angel Fire, for their Angel Fire Veterans Cemetery. I did forward that email on to the board from the Department of Veterans Affairs, so...
What time is that?
I believe it starts at 10:00 AM, I, and it's in Colfax County.
Eleven.
Is it 11:00?
I think so, yeah.
So I believe it starts at 11:00, Colfax County, if you do attend, or if you tend to attend, let us know, so that we can be aware or notice of the quarrel if that's necessary. And on that note, I do want to inform the board that we did have a very productive meeting with Department of Veterans Affairs last Friday in regards to art projects of Veterans Cemetery. We took the new director of cemeteries out to the site, and they are very supportive of our efforts to continue moving forward. They were very candid and honest about the opportunity of being a national cemetery, it's still not immediately likely, however, our progress does help us as we move forward and they open that up again. So they are still moving forward with their original five sites, Angel Fire being a big accomplishment for them to get the groundbreaking done, the Gala Cemetery is well underway and moving along, Fort Stanton has been opened, and so I think the final cemetery of the original disney fight is in Carlsbad, and that's gonna be kicking off, I believe, in the winter, springtime. So they do, there has been a change in directors of the cemetery, and we feel a lot more supported by this individual, and they're very supportive of our efforts, however, they also are very honest that it may not be something they can take over immediately, however, the more we put into it, the better, or likely, but of them being able to look at us in the next go-round, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to hear the little gala was getting one, much needed in that area.
Yes, I think for the most part, they were all very strategic, even Angel Fire obviously has a lot of momentum, and it's a big draw for the veterans of the Vietnam War. And we know that the complication of even only 40 miles away, it's a totally different area for us, but that 40 miles does weigh in heavily on the federal determination as to whether or not we could have two so close together. But we'll continue to put in our efforts and do our best to progress our project. Want to update the board on, it's called a FLAP funding grant opportunity, this is something that's been on our radar for a few years. FLAP stands for Federal Lands Access Projects. It's a grant from the federal government, it was brought to our attention about three years ago from BLM, and we've been waiting patiently for them to open up the cycle, well, the FLAP cycle is now open, and in fact, right now, Mr. Hara Mio is in a meeting with BLM and our engineer to further discuss our options. We want to work very collaboratively with BLM in order to, you know, get them... We want to work very collaboratively with B L M in order to, you know, get the most support possible for our project, but we are currently. The point of FLAP is to focus on roads that do access federal lands. And so because of our monument designation, there are a couple access points that B L M brought to our attention, so we're trying to work with them to find the most beneficial to both the county and to B L M. So ideas are C one-ten, all the way out to the trailhead, passing our new cemetery, B double oh-seven, which we just did a chip seal on, but as we get closer to the bridge. So we're looking at.
How about the bridge itself?
The bridge itself is something we're looking at as well, both the small bridge and the actual bridge across the real ground.
Yes, so Commissioner Armeto, I've already made a presentation to congressional, uh, of our needs, and that's why hopefully, don't have short memories.
And Mr. Chairman, FLAP, will you pay for those bridges?
That's our goal. We're not going to limit ourselves to one application. We've talked about submitting multiple applications to see what actually is most supportive. And if we get more than one support, uh, one application approved, we'll do the work on that. There's a total of thirty to thirty-five million dollars out there. It's an annual application of about eight million. So it's not a ton of money for all the people that are competing for it, but we do feel very strongly about our competitive process and the fact that B L M has basically put this right in front of us, so that's why we're working really closely with them, we leave most of it, so.
Did you mention Pila, I know?
No, not in this particular grant opportunity, not this.
I really wish we could submit. I thought, because how many years have I been on the commission? Since nineteen ninety-five, ninety-four, almost twenty-five years, and so, um, that community is in dire need of a bridge.
Mr. Chairman, did you determine whether who owns that bridge?
Um, no, we still have not made a final determination on who owns the bridge.
And the other thing I think is problematic about is there are no roads, and we get on the other side, good.
Just saying, try it anyway.
People could access it. Back to giving an agreement, V O T, on these projects, if we don't know if they own it or we own it, so.
Built it on the bridge.
So I keep the board apprised of our progress. The final deadline for that is January sixth, so we're well underway, and we do intend to be able to meet that date in deadline. Just to inform the board, our concession building for Pretty Mont Sanchez Park is scheduled to be delivered this week, so we're hoping that that will get there this week, we'll place it down, and then we'll have a little bit more connections and stuff. We are connecting to the town's water and wastewater at this time, so that's a big initiative for us, and so that will be hopefully ready to go for next baseball season, so definitely be online by springtime.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering how's there been a delay? Every time I drive by, there's the open trench. I don't see any activity. Is there a problem with getting pipes or?
Um, no, the delay was on the manufacturer of the building. They pushed it back one week originally. We have a schedule to come last week, so we were prepared to be able to accept it last week, and then they pushed it off, so that was the bigger delay other than that. So I think we were just ahead, ready, prepared to be able to accept the building.
But the trenching, close that, all those trenches up?
Not yet. When the building arrives and we connect it up, then we can.
And then you close it up, okay. Mr. Chairman, is there any way you could get our P I O to do a little press release when it's done?
Definitely, yes, we'll go ahead and do a written thing of some sort, I guess it's all complete, but I would put it in, let the board know, most likely in the springtime.
Okay. But just a press release that it's completed, and it'll be a ribbon cutting in springtime. I think it's good P R for the base project.
Um, and then remind the board that our auditors are on site this week. We are on schedule and near completion of our audit, and it looks like we did their last week on site, and so we do have a goal of an exit conference about the second or third week of November, and we should be able to meet all of our deadlines and determine our audit by the summer first deadline. And that's all I have at this time. I stand for any questions of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Corleone.
Thank you.
Item twelve A is new business. Be considered a future commission meeting, Commissioners? Item B, Commissioners' announcements, I have an update after being at the multi-line law enforcement pool and work comp, combined retreat and sessions this last week. Good news for us, as it looks like our multi-line contribution next year will be the same, possibly lower. We're trying to find some formula for the counties that are doing real good on our claims as we are. We're in a very low percentile of, uh, of claims to contribution, which would hopefully bring ours down, but the good news is it's not going up. We don't own the law enforcement because of the large exposure and the excessive claims that we deal with every month, and those boards has driven that to where it's basically not insurable anymore for the reinsurance. We have to transfer up to ten million dollars in claims, and then we buy ten million dollars of reinsurance for anything that goes over the ten million. At this time, we're already at seventeen million dollars of claims paid for this year, so we're in jeopardy of losing coverage for the law enforcement detentions in the period. With that said, then, there is a move that will go to the board, Commissioner Armeto, of combining the three pools. If it does, it gives us a healthier picture. We had a five-hour retreat of brain, uh, like, you know, just throwing out ideas and everything to try to make the pools more solvent. It looks like combining them could be it. So over the next eighteen months, we'll be working on that project. Our work comp will only change also because there's a surplus in that based on our, of course, it's a calculation based on our payroll, so if that changes, that would be the only fluctuation, but we're not expecting it. Although, Tous County is in the red with our work comp, we're at a hundred and seventeen percent of our contribution, I'm sure, because of claims. And, um, as, even though we have people that are working really hard in our risk awareness program, claims still happen, but previous nine years of the tenure cycle, we were way under, so our average over the tenure cycle is still thirty-eight percent, which is pretty good. I was elected secretary treasurer of the work comp board and was named the New Mexico Counties Board Member to represent work comp, and I do that on the multi-line law enforcement pools as well.
Mr. Chairman, is that new Take Minutes as a secretary?
I think that means lines of the new Take Minutes. They could read this right, and they're going to have a lot of fun. So there's a new rap program. We get those emails from Jason every week. It's being revamped. It'll launch hopefully in, I mean, January of next year. And we will have a presentation in December from New Mexico Counties regarding the local government view. These are some programs that are for, it's a training library for all of our employees. Classes like H R safety, corrections classes, E O C, employment law, medical services, they can see each through this, equipment safety, financial management, there's firefighting and general safety class, health and wellness, H R development, I T classes, law enforcement, leadership development, professional development, risk management. There, it's just a wealth of information through these classes, and they're adding more each month, and we're not taking advantage of it. They have a county map here showing how many counties have taken advantage of the classes, and Tous County is a great deal of zero. This could be an alternative for sending people to edge classes, or at least get the people to understand, like, give them a focus of what their training track could be before they go to an edge class and see that what they're taking. But there's a lot of really good classes, and they'll make a presentation, like I said, in December. We can sign in with the program. It's free to the county, and we need to take advantage of that. The other is a program called Community Nurse, which helps us with the work comps. Claim prior to going to the emergency room, you talk to a medical professional. The cost to us is about seventy dollars each, how we do it, but the cost to an emergency room visit for our employees to go, if it's borderline, if it's near or not, is fifteen hundred dollars minimum. So they would be talking to a healthcare professional that will take their, through their treatment plan. It's a really good plan. That's also available to us, and we haven't acted on it. I think that after the presentation, people agree with me that we need both of those programs added to our, so. And good news that came out of this, and I guess they can talk about it more openly, the John Gonzalez claim, she withdrew her appeal, case officially closed, no exposure to Tous County. That's huge. That's what I have through, and then I have some other data that I can't print because this is a stupid iPad, and it's not a real computer, but I'd like to show you, like, some of our numbers for the tenure cycle. Tous County is doing really good in our, um, our claims counts. It drops significantly, including our law enforcement claim. So I was, it's, get real proud of seeing that we're on the downtrend and everybody else seems to be on the uptrend, especially one county that has sheriff that doesn't believe body cams, it's just every month, we're paying up, paying up, paying up, and stuff. So that's all I have from that. Anything, Commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to let the board know that I attended the New Mexico Association of Counties Board meeting in beautiful Denver, New Mexico, by the week and a half ago. It was a good meeting. We gave a new contract out to our executive director, Mr. Sheen Coleman. I believe it has a three percent raise, and that will be for additional two new years. One of the things that I did get out of the board meeting also was a presentation by a representative of the Census Bureau and the, we're planning to, wanting to meet with our county managers, our county commissioners, and our city mayors and city managers here fairly soon. I do have contacts for all of that in effort to plan the work of the Census Bureau, what they'll be doing in the next year in order to have a full report that they need for the census that will be conducted through two thousand and twenty. And the representative that was there, I forget her name.
She sent us an email the other day.
Yeah, she's, uh, she couldn't get the message enough out there that we need to urge our residents to respond to that census when it does come to our door and it's time for us to answer the questionnaire that the representatives will come to our door with. And so, you know, if we're able to do that, it means more money from the federal government, hopefully as well, you know, and it'll give us a better idea of where the demographics are, and all that good stuff that comes with the census.
For that, they're raised.
That's right.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think the census wants us to create a committee, because the census is going to be online, and we need to plan to make sure everybody's reached. I think they go to your door only if they're unable to reach us, and then again, with the rural addressing issue, we need to maybe continue to push forward, that we have accurate rural addressing, but we do, it was suggested a committee be formed in two thousand and nineteen to have a strategy of how we're going to reach these people who don't have internet, and how we're going to get them in to fill out the surveys. So it's really a major project for.
And has anything to do with our district being one of the people that have to do in two thousand and twenty as well?
As well. And, and, Mr. Chairman, I did stress the fact that we do have areas in, in Tous County, a lot of it in my district, the west of, the, Tresquilla, those Carson areas, where there's a lot of folks that live out there, but they're not necessarily accounted for or reachable in an easy manner. And so she indicated, she was aware of those areas already, and they're going to try and work with the county, try and reach the folks that live out there. What else? I guess that was pretty much it, Mr. Chairman. Your job is to create some positions, a lot of working positions, a lot of managing positions during, you know, the year probably nineteen, two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, so for people who want to work in Tous County, there's a job opportunity there. I'll take one myself. I'll be out of the commission there.
Right, anything else, Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, to remind the commission, it's time for our annual detention center inspection, so please get that done before December, so we can have a report. And if Mr. F, the county manager, could check with New Mexico Counties to see if there's any update to that checklist that we would give.
I'll just talk to retired, and retire, the new person that does responsible for that, so I don't know if there's any updates I can check.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in addition, I wanted to mention, and I've spoken to our county manager about this, but I've gotten a lot of calls lately from Rancho's residents, and as I understand, there's a petition that's going to be circulated fairly soon to try to get the town, the county, the state highway department to look at the possibility of installing lighting from the wirey section in Rancho's to the Sage Brush Inn where the town limits begin. As you know, there have been numerous fatalities on that road. The most recent one that took place about two weeks ago, it was a couple walking across the street, two were from the Sage Brush Inn, and a gentleman, I believe, from Mexico Canyon was, was run over and passed away. So that's kind of sparked some residents of that area to come forward to myself. I don't know if the younger ones communicated with that yet, but they are wanting to see one of us entities installing lighting, sidewalk lighting along that, what is it, about a three-quarter, quarter-mile corridor between the Sage Brush Inn and the wirey section. And if you drive through there at night, especially when it's raining or snowing, it's very dark, and so whatever we can do, Mr. Corleone, to start that process of communication, I would say go to the highway department to begin with, and then. It would be really good to have that as one of the topics for discussion with the, in the joint meeting with the town of Tous.
That's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Okay. Moving on to item C, discussion consideration applicable of letter of support for the N P R T T O while review committee for the Town of Tous recreational trails program, and letter from Town of Tous in support of Tous County tap application. You'd be deciding, Commissioner, for them to, this is just a formally ask of those people.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in front of you, you have a draft letter that our county manager would sign on behalf of the town for their recreational trails program application, and it's a very. And it's a very short letter that, you know, you can change. But it says Taos County whole heartedly supports the Kid Carson Park Trail Rehabilitation Project submitted by the town of Taos. The 1.71 mile trail system curves throughout the park and adjacent to the historic cemetery that is visited by thousands of visitors each year. The trail system is in poor condition and is not ADA accessible. The town contracted to have the park's master plan completed recently, which included extensive public input. And the recommendations are to upgrade and expand the existing pathway system and make it ADA accessible. The upgrades will be of benefit to the residents and towards the life. Thank you for your consideration. So I'm just asking that when you sign off on this letter on behalf of the town, and I do have a letter of support that has been written by the town of Taos for our project. There's just tweaking needed to be done in the numbers. So that is ready to go. It just needs to be tweaked. So we have both letters. But this is the letter I'm asking that the commission approve.
In the form of a motion.
In the form of a motion.
Thank you. Who for approval, Mr. Chairman? A motion and a second to approve the letter of support of the NPR TPO review committee for town house recreational trails. Correct call.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Robal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gaygo?
Yes.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes. Okay, next item is item 13. Taos County Commissioners make convene in closed session regarding detention center investigation. Mr. Ramiro, you may be discussed in closed session under Open Meetings Act exemption. 10-15-1H2. Mr. Ramiro, is it your recommendation that we go into closed session at this time?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
And will we be having the detention center staff that sent in remain with us?
It wasn't my intention. It's just going to be a briefing today and in anticipation of the conclusion, not at this point.
Pleasure, the commission.
Before that we go into executive session, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and second going to closed session under the exemption 10-15-1H2 regarding detention center investigation. Correct call.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Robal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gaygo?
Yes.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes.
Do you have any more?
Yeah.
Commissioner has motioned to go back into open session. So second motion, a second to go back into open session. Correct call.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Robal? Yes. Vice Chair Gaygo?
Yes.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes. Mr. Ramiro, would you give the public a report regarding our closed session under the exemption 10-15-1H2?
Mr. Chairman, thanks for the promotion.
Right, right.
Commissioner, so. Good promotion.
Any... Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
We went into closed session under the provisions of the Open Meetings Act to discuss personnel matters and no decisions were made and the Open Meetings Act was complied with.
Motion to accept, Mr. Ramiro, so. Second. Motion to accept, correct call.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Robal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gaygo?
Yes.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes. Now, motion to adjourn?
So.
Second. Out of favor, aye, aye. Close. Okay, you go.